Have a quorum of the school committee.
I see Kate in participants right now. Attendees, I mean, and so is Michelle.
Hi, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Lee.
Yeah, so let's get the streaming. Okay, let's go.
So you're streaming, you're good, and we'll bring them in as they come in if anyone else comes.
And I just am bringing Kate in, and who else is in there?
Michelle.
And she's in. And she's in now.
Oh, you've got her. Okay.
And Aubrey Lombardo is our legal.
And she's coming to the here into the meeting itself?
Yes, she would advise school committee. And or Andrew, I think Aubrey's there, though.
Aubrey is here.
Thank you very much.
Okay, no problem.
All right, given that we're all here and it's 7:02, I'd like to order this meeting of the South Kingstown Town Council. Features a joint meeting with the South Kingstown School Committee. And this is part of our ongoing budget process. This is our first budget hearing after passing the preliminary budget adoption last month. So our first order of business, as always, is the pledge to the flag. Susan, if you wouldn't mind leading us in that, I'd be grateful.
I certainly will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, very good. Thank you very much. And will you please take the role?
Council President Collins?
Here.
Council Vice President McEntee?
Here.
Councilwoman Bergner?
Here.
Councilwoman Kelso?
Here.
Councilwoman Rose?
Here.
All of the council members are present.
Fantastic. All right, item four on the agenda is a public hearing. A public hearing with the school committee participation relative to the town council's preliminary budget for fiscal year 2021-2022, as adopted on March 22, 2021. The public hearing will address all funds contained within the town council's preliminary budget. And I saw it looked like, Rob, you had a PowerPoint.
We've got a brief, brief PowerPoint presentation, and I'm going to turn it over to Zach for his overview, just a narrative discussion of where we are with the budget. And then we have a presentation by Raquel Pellegren describing the state of the school budget at this point. As everyone knows, this has been a difficult year to budget in because the state was very late in getting projections, and there was a lot of moving parts, particularly around the state. The state aid accounts and the federal funds that were pending in legislation when we began the budgeting process. Some of that's been resolved. There are still questions out there with regard to the federal funds, but we are making some progress toward understanding how much federal money is going to be available for school use and for town use. So if you don't mind, I'm just going to give a very brief overview of the elements of this budget. Let's just see if I can. Yeah, so this is the council's preliminary budget. Key features about the preliminary budget at this point are that the property tax rate will be $14.45 if this budget is adopted as it exists right now. That's a 0.0% increase over last year, which was a 0.0% increase over the previous year. So this will be the third year in a row if this budget is adopted as it is, with a tax rate of $14.45. The tax levy tax levy does increase. It increases by about 1.3. All of that increases due to growth in the grand list, the tax rolls here in Rhode Island. This is the total number, the total value of property has increased, and the tax levy has tracked that to keep a tax increase of 0%. We did, you know, capture the new construction and the new value in real estate. This budget generally funds all municipal and school programs at the same levels as last year. Property tax transfer to the schools will be $55,994,073 if this budget is adopted as it exists now. That is level funding from 2021. It's sort of a stray note about neighbors helping neighbors. There was an increase in the allocation to that agency. We did increase, or the council did increase, the outside agency contributions by $2,000. This is over what managers proposed had suggested. It does eliminate the human resource full-time position that was proposed in the manager's original proposal, and the animal welfare superintendent position has been eliminated as well. It does reduce healthcare cost rate from 6% to 4%, reduces the post, other post-employment benefits from $175,000 to $175,000, which is a $50,000 reduction over the initial estimate and proposal in the original manager's proposed budget. This proposed, or this council's budget at this point does use about $440,000 more in undesignated fund balance. And it did increase the stipends paid to the planning board and the zoning board of the zoning board of appeals and the assessment board of review. So members will now receive $40 per meeting. One of the innovative elements of this budget as it exists is that it calls for quarterly reviews with supplemental appropriations being possible. This concept is not uncommon in budgeting and government budgeting. It's very common for governments to come back looking for supplemental appropriations. It's not typical to sort of build that into your budget plan at the beginning of the year. Supplemental appropriations usually come up when a surprise occurs, when something unexpected happens during the course of the budget implementation. This budget recognizes that something will happen. We know that the unexpected will will happen. We can expect the unexpected because we know that the Department of Treasury is going to give down rules that explain how the ESRA funds, the school funds that the federal government has made available can be spent. And the Treasury is going to put down rules that explain how the recovery plan monies can be spent. So we know that there's going to be federal funds available. We just don't know how those funds are going to be available. So the idea of coming back and sort of anticipating that supplemental appropriations will happen is built into this this annual budget. Supplemental appropriation will be informed by the experience of the schools and the town as we get the money and we get the direction from the Federal Department of Treasury and from state agencies such as RIDE. Just to put some figures around that, the ESRA two allocation reported by RIDE is $1.3 million roughly, and the estimate for ESRA three funds is $2.3, $2.4 million. So we are gonna, we are going to see some money, although Raquel may speak to some of the restrictions that we know are already going to be put on the ESRA three funds. The town, it will also see not this year, but one half of this amount this year. We will see $3 million in county-based funds and $1.5 million in direct non-entitlement federal funds through the recovery plan. So those funds will be coming in two tranches, one this year and the second next year. We're expecting the first chunk of money to be coming our way probably in May or June. And that really is, that's that's sort of the overview of the budget. I think it's probably more useful to dive into questions. It's not a particularly dynamic or complicated budget because really nothing changes. We're talking about level funding most of the programs. And we're talking about just being aware of the fact that we're going to know how much of the federal funds can be used for budget augmentation or budget purposes, general operational purposes. Zach, any thoughts or other?
No, I think you've covered everything that, you know, we've, that has been, you know, preliminary adopted by the council. I'm happy to answer any questions that any of the members may have.
All right, I'm sorry, then I think it probably makes sense to have Raquel make her presentation.
Yeah, let's go there.
If, so this is Linda. Will I be able to share this, my screen? Is that okay?
Yeah, can we make that possible?
Is that, are you okay saying that? Okay. So, so tonight, what we were going to do is provide a budget update. Thank you, first of all, for having us. And thank you for, it's wonderful to be able to do a combined hearing. I just, we want to, first of all, though, just give an update of, as Rob shared, this is challenging year, probably one of the most challenging years we've all ever had. And certainly, the only thing we can count on is that we can't count on anything. We've needed to step through and figure things out, as I know I've shared earlier this year for us in the, on the, for the schools. We have been open every day. We've worked, though, from day one in a kind of freeze environment financially. So we have scrutinized every penny as we've stepped through. It's been a little bit different for all, but I think clearly understandable, not knowing what the next day was going to bring. And in all honesty, as we opened, I don't think any of us maybe thought, Rob included, thought that we would be open this far. And in April, I'm kind of still going full steam ahead. So we're very proud of that, not that we haven't had our moments and our challenges, and certainly our peaks and valleys. As we built our FY22 budget, though, we knew we were building it different than we ever had before. Although it is a goals-based budget, we've held true to those goals. One of the largest is really working on our achievement gap. We are building a thoughtful program for the summer that will be driven on the specific needs of our children and where we can really monitor the area of need, personalize, customize for the, for our children that have those gaps. I don't think this is a program that will ever go away, though. I think we'll hopefully learn. And oh, and we know that children will always need added time and support, so we'll learn and grow together from that. For the budget today, for FY22, what we'd like to share with you tonight is really our best thinking now. Um, today. We know that we were charged with working to reduce. We understand that. We don't, we are sensitive to the needs of the community, and we have tried to work very hard based upon what we know today, which is ever-changing. Received information in the middle of the day today from Department of Education around S3. It's, so it's forever being released, changing, and and the state just shares their best understanding at the moment. So what we've taken that, analyzed it, and will unpack that with you. We did do this with the school committee last night. We also have shared this document. It's actually available in clerk base last night, and we've also, I've uploaded it for tonight's meeting as well, so it would be easily accessible. I guess my largest stressor is just that this is not final tonight. But it is just really, as of right now, the best we could do. And Raquel will unpack it with us, but as we worked for many weeks on this, I guess the bottom line and the takeaway is, you know, could we reduce more? We could, but we know that for the reductions we have, there are expected, there will be increases. And it would not be right to set us up and falsely present something that was cut that isn't, couldn't actually be reduced. With that, I also want to share that we've really tried to hold on to the programs that we had committed to as our pillars. As of right now, we are holding on to those pieces. So again, this is fluid, which is not probably what you want to hear, but it is just being honest. Um, Raquel, will you step us through the revenue and then the expenditure update?
Sure. Do you want to go right to that grid? And I think we can talk to that.
Yeah, of course.
I think that that was helpful last night.
Do you want to, um, do you just want to give kind of that, the update around the changes that we've had from the state?
Sure. So what we are looking at right now is the changes to the state aid for education. We heard probably last month that the state was considering three different options with regards to how to address funding formula and per pupil. What they decided on is to go with per pupil from last fiscal year, and that is what we budgeted. So there is no change to the budget for the the formula aid. But there is change in the governor's budget to categorical aid. So high-cost special education and group home aid for South Kingstown has been slightly reduced. So adding to the variance that we have with the municipal aid for education, we also have a variance in categorical stating. And this document, like Linda said, was was presented to school committee last night. We've been working on it since we last met. And as Linda touched on before, this is subject to change. It does not include any additional assumptions or increases to items that would exist with the normal cost of doing business within a schools. For example, we could have a situation where we have special education students moving in, and we didn't take that into this scenario. What we're looking at is just what we can reduce with regards to expenditures to close the the gap that currently exists. I think Linda and Rob touched on that we are getting additional information day by day with regards to ESA funds. Rhode Island Department of Education, let me just touch on ESA three first, has not provided much information. We did get preliminary figures. They vary anywhere between 2 million and 3 million total. We don't know how much will stay with the state. The only article that they provided to us was from the U.S. Department of Education, and we don't know what the state is going to do with it. With regards to ESA two, we did get additional information in the form of application questions. With those application questions, and that was to prepare for the grant application, which is not out yet. They listed five absolute priorities that we needed to focus on. And of the 1.3 million that the district will receive, they set a floor, not a ceiling, that 50% of those funds have to be used for acceleration activities with regards to learning equity and pathways. And 25% of those funds have to be used for summer activities. So we're left with 25% of those funds that we have somewhat of the option to think outside the box. With that being said, we always have to stay under the umbrella of expenditures that are applied to ESA have to do to preventing, preparing, or responding to COVID. So what we had done is looked at what was in the general fund with regards to staffing, staff that we could move from general fund over to ESA. That is two custodians that were hired for responding to COVID, as well as three teacher assistants that that their percentage was increased by 0.4 each. We're hoping that Ride will approve this. We feel comfortable enough with saying right now that that is a possible reduction to the general fund. The next part of it is health and dental insurance. We've been going back and forth with the trust, as well as, you know, Zach and I talk about this all the time. What does it look like? They have given me a figure last week of anywhere between 3% to 5% in health. They're, these are not final figures. They're hopeful to have the final figures by the end of this week or the beginning of next week. That being said, just like the municipal side, we're reducing that from 6% to 4%. So that saves us about $116,000. The next is the proposed reduction in staffing. Linda has met with principals and directors to look at their current staffing enrollment projections and schedulings and really think outside the box of how we could reduce staff while still servicing students. So we estimate that there can be reductions, and that totals $389,000. The next three are TBD. With regards to OPEB, Zach and I had a virtual meeting with the actuaries. We're reviewing a couple of different scenarios that we're still not final on. We're hoping in the next couple of weeks to bring back probably a reduction in the payment, the ARC payment or the ADC payment to the trust. So that's another possible reduction that we're working on. With regards to transportation, our current transportation contractor will be working over the April break with a third party, their third-party contractor with regards to scheduling buses. And if they do come forward with their feasibility study that does produce some savings, what we'll do is then apply for a waiver to the Rhode Island Department of Education. In the major document that we have that we presented, we talked about like other additional reductions. And that is, we're looking at every opportunity that we possibly can to make reductions. We're still watching to see what the regulations from ESA three are. At this point, nothing has been said. So at this point, and it's as of April 9, really, that this document was prepared, the budget variance is now $468,000. Again, it is subject to change, and we're hoping in the next couple of weeks, we will, the TPDs will have numbers applied to it.
Thank you.
And I think that that's a fair summary, Mr. President, of where we are with regard to the budget at this point.
Okay. So now we can sort of talk about the presentations that we've seen at some length. You know, the first question to me is, obviously, there's this discrepancy of potentially $470,000. What would it look like if that $470,000 couldn't be found from our side? Know what the implications are? I guess that's a question for Linda.
Do, is that a question for the schools?
I think so.
We, I mean, we're, we're, as I, as we shared, we are continuing to work on it. We're hoping that there could be savings with transportation. Again, as I said earlier, though, just as much as there could be savings with the transportation, we could be in a situation we need to add a bus. As much as we could find savings in another line, we could have a special education child need $100,000 placement tomorrow. So those, we're starting to get to the place that we will, at the end of the day, we're a service organization that utilizes staff and will be impacting staffing, which is some level of a struggle, as you wanted not over pack classes right now. And we know that the fall is not going to look dramatically different for us. I know we want it to. And I know that we want it to be back to no masks, sitting the way we used to sit, but that's not going to be as, you know, we're hopeful for children having vaccines, but we're not going to, we know we're not going to be there for August, September. So so I'm, we, I can share at the end of the document that was given to you, there are the areas we continue to work on, and those are the areas right now that we would continue to unpack to try to find savings. We would just try to be thoughtful. I'm not here to cause drama or alarm or worry. We just would continue to work very hard to close the gap. You, you know, I feel that we were charged to try to do that. We have tried to do that, but I'm not. We'll, we'll just continue to do our best with that. At the end of the day, you know, in extreme situation, if we're there and we can't close that gap, then it will be impacting our staffing. Because that's where the dollars are in a school department's budget.
There, I was muted. Are there questions, Michelle?
Um, Ms. Pellerin, I, I'm looking at, and it's the same presentation as you gave us last night. But after I reread it again, I want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. Under the 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 chart that you gave us, that was the sum of possible reductions. And one of the TBDs is transportation. So, so can I just briefly tell you how I understand it? And then you can say, Michelle, you're way out in left field, or yes, you're right. So the way I understand it is, are young people that we transport out of the district? We're supposed to use like that statewide transportation. But before that regulation got put in, and I was on the school committee then, we did it cheaper by making arrangements with, you know, now again, said North Kingstown nearby districts, you know, we, together, the nearby districts had, you know, a certain number of people all going to the same auto district placement, and we put them all on the same bus. And then the state said, no, 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 you have to use statewide. So you, am I correct in assuming you're looking to the state and saying, look, we can do it cheaper? Why should we use your statewide?
That is well said, and that is, that is perfect. That is exactly what we're doing. Perfect. Okay. Thank you.
Kate, your hand is up.
Yep. My only follow-up to that, Raquel, is what do you think the odds of them like agreeing to that? Because to, to, to your point and to Linda's point, and the point behind it is funds that are going into transportation could be going into our, our, our children, our teachers, our programs. Like, do you have a feel for how the state might respond? And are we the only ones going at it this way, or is there a group of us?
There are, there are others that are, that are going forward with the waiver in the previous district that I work, and they did it every year. So Rhode Island Department of Education is open to it. And like Linda said, and I said in the beginning of the presentation, that's only looking at a snapshot. We don't know with the increase in ridership what that looks like with adding a bus. So we could get the waiver, we could have additional cost. Just like the chart we're looking at, we could reduce down, and two, three students can come into district. That's going to increase our transportation and increase our tuition. We're, we're getting to the point where there would be getting that low with transportation and narrowing it down leaves no safety net.
Rob, your hand?
Raquel, I just want to make sure I remember. I know we talked about it this afternoon, and you did mention it just now, but you're expecting that analysis to be done in early, in the next week? It's next week?
Yes. Yes, so the Ocean State is working with their company Versitran that does scheduling. So they'll be working with them on April vacation to see if they can do those routes and combine different districts for audit district transportation.
So hopefully we'll know the result of that analysis before April 26th, and the council has to make a final adoption. Is that right?
I would say so, yes. And I will follow with them to say that that is our deadline.
Jess?
Thank you. So I'm, I'm curious as to what our transportation policy looks like in regards to. So speaking from personal experience, I can almost see Wakefield School from my house. Yet my son is still offered busing. So I, I'm wondering if, you know, what are, what can we do to encourage families, right? Because we also want to be conscious of our carbon footprint, too. We want to become more green in general as a community. What are we doing to encourage families to not have to rely on busing? You know, like there's, there are not many crossing guards on High Street, I've noticed. So I think maybe that holds some folks back from letting their little ones walk to Wakefield. So just, I'm curious as to what we can do to encourage people to, you know, make the choice to walk to school and not, not need it to provide busing for so many kids. Is, has that been looked into?
Um, this is Linda. Not necessarily initially, intentionally per se, but COVID did push us to another place with transportation. And Kate probably can speak too with a lot of history on the transportation subcommittee. But I'll share that we, you know, kind of did our first survey asking if parents would be willing to find an alternative mode of traffic options for getting their children to and from school this year. So many did drive, but many did use bikes and walk. And so we ended up needing to do three surveys. The first survey was a little bit of a depressing response. The second time we begged a little bit, and the third, we really begged an awful lot. And we were able to, because the other implication for other districts is that they weren't able to open every day because they could not, they didn't have a way to get the children to school. But because our parents did find other methods, then we were able to open every day because we really cut our, at the time, had cut our transportation down to less than 50% on the buses. So we may be able to kind of stay with that narrative, if you will, being of course completely honest and transparent, but asking folks if they have found other ways, could they maybe lean on them? And I will share too, Rob and I had many conversations during the snowy season because we suddenly had different hurdles that we didn't have the year before because we had bike paths that needed to be really cleaned quickly for access to school. Crosswalks that were at the bike paths that had a different kind of pressure on them. And I mean, I've taken pictures, the bikes that are at the schools this year, all year were really, it was great. So hopefully if we can continue with that culture, we were forced there a little bit this year because of COVID, but maybe another silver lining if we can keep that momentum going. And where it, there is, you know, we, and really, we did survey and we held people to the survey. Of course, we don't want to cause hardship for families either. And I know some families, it was a hardship for them to have to provide transportation. We have a half a mile for elementary students. They have to be more than a half a mile. And secondary and middle school can walk up to a mile to the bus stop. So there, we have, we do have specific policy around what they're able to do. But I know it is hard for families. They don't necessarily, they want their children safe. It gets dark early in the winter. It's cold out, all of those things, we try to find the balance. And I'm sure Kate probably could give a more eloquent answer to it all.
I don't know about eloquent, but what I will say, Jess, though, is we do have our transportation committee and, and often, and Raquel, she, she experienced some of our brainstorming sessions because we do discuss like, how do we, how do we, number one, you know, encourage people to walk more and, and use the bike path? I use my, my family as an example because I literally could take a rock and throw it and hit Curtis Corner. But if I travel the road, I qualify, my kids qualified for the bus, right? So it's like, well, but there's a bike path right there. Why can't they just walk the bike path? And, you know, you know, there's levels of safety concern and age and that. So we've talked about the walking bus, the walking buses, where you have like people volunteer to be monitors to pick up kids and walk them to school and like, you know, that kind of thing. But what recently, and I don't want to get into too much more detail and take up too much more time, but recently we have discussed trying to like bringing it with the town and maybe getting town, either town council or, or town staff or somebody to join us on the, on our transportation committee. Because I think it's, it's a bigger, it's a bigger hurdle than just the school district. And quite frankly, I'm, I'm often, the town council has heard me in the past. I don't know about this one, but I, I often like to get up and talk about, you know, Ripton should be playing a part. There should be shuttles, like it's, it's a bigger conversation, I think, to be had. But anyway, if anyone wants to join us, we're welcome. You're welcome.
I would be interested in jumping in there, totally. And I think too, like exploring, and again, speaking from personal experience, I know for us, it was an issue last year. My son took the bus last year. He really didn't need to. My mother-in-law couldn't get down to the school physically to pick him up, but she could get to the, the stop at the end of the street. He was just considered too young to be, it goes by grade, I guess. And because we had held him back, he's actually a year older. So really, he was old enough, but his grade wasn't allowing him to. So maybe looking at stuff like that and giving some more autonomy to families to say, hey, yeah, you know, my kid is ready to, to be a walker, even though he's in second grade, you know, or first grade. I think might, might be helpful, you know, to, to explore that. But yeah, Kate, I would definitely be interested in, in jumping in there.
Paul?
Thank you. My question is, how, how does the district get jobs for transportation? Is it per student, by boot, school distance? I'm trying to understand that part.
They gave us, they gave us an estimate per bus, per route.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions? And any part of the budget, of course, is open for discussion. People don't, so we want to talk about the school request. Well, one question that occurs to me when we were debating the preliminary budget was some discussion about how many positions in, you know, the school program were related to COVID? And, you know, whether, you know, all of those positions can be funded through the federal funds that we're expecting? Is that already envisioned by this budget?
I can answer that. And so part of our budget reduction is looking at the positions that we did hire to respond to COVID. So that is part of that, that document that, again, there are two custodians that were hired for cleaning strictly due to COVID. And we had three teacher assistants that were increased point four to respond to COVID needs. We did have additional hours for staff for a drop-off and pickup, but that's not included in the 22 budget. The assumption was made early on that if that was still necessary, that would be going to grants or, or ESF funds at that point. We knew that that was something that could be covered. We actually secured a grant in this current year for substitutes, of course, like that related to drop-off and pickup for staff. So again, the FTEs have already been taken into account in this latest round to get us down to the 468,000. This is Linda. Could we have Andrew Henness brought in, our legal? Thank you.
Were you hoping to have Andrew come in to answer a specific question, Linda?
Just to keep us in line.
Well, it's not a very rowdy bunch right now, I can tell you. Questions or comments at this point? Councilwoman Berger?
Thank you, Abel. I know this was mentioned in the town side. We talked a little bit about the use of the undesignated fund. So for the community, could you just provide the information about how much of the undesignated fund will be used in the municipal side as well as the school side? And also what you're anticipating for year-end surplus at the end of this year? And would you be able to use what you're anticipating in to plug the remaining 400,000?
So on the municipal side, the preliminarily adopted budget calls for $440,000 from the undesignated fund balance on the municipal side. That, that's not the school undesignated fund, just the municipal.
And on the school side, we're putting in a million dollars of undesignated fund balance, 537 for capital and 493,000 in general fund. And, and if we were to end the year, I don't like to use the terminology to plug a budget because you really have to look to identify the expenses that the one-time funds would support, especially on the school side, because you're not generating revenue, and you could get yourself into a situation with structural deficit. I will say my recommendation would be if we did end with that balance, we'd look for one-time funds, one-time expenses to apply to those one-time funds.
And I'm sorry, Councilwoman Bergner, I misspoke. The 440 is additional over the, the adopted, over the proposed budget. Zach, the original number that was built on is what?
So the total with the additional 440 is approximately 1.3 from town side. The original proposal would have been about eight, eight eighty, in that range.
It's, it's important to note that those amounts, both on the town side and on the school side, keep us within best practice parameters and within the town's undesigned, undesignated fund balance policy. So we are, we're, we're conforming to our policies and to best practice with those amounts being used.
And also I just would add that due to the early nature of our budget process, there, there were a lot of unknowns with federal money and state money. As that rounds out, you may not need to, as we, you know, once we get into the fiscal year, you may not need that, depending on how things go, expenditures and revenues. So it's something we will monitor closely as, as the year progresses. But that's what we proposed. And that was what we used to, one, come back in line and two, help provide the no increase in the tax rate.
Councilwoman Berger?
Just since we're right there, talking about undesignated funds, could you just provide for the community, the school undesignated fund that you, the amount that you have? I know we had said, I can't remember what it is. I don't want to say the wrong amount and just in the municipal side, so the community is aware?
On the municipal side, we closed out fiscal 20 within the $16 million range.
And I don't have the exact number for schools, but it's a, I would say estimated about three million. But some of that is restricted and can only be used for restricted purposes.
Any other questions, comments? Councilwoman McEntee?
Hi, Raquel, I just want to circle back to Abel Collins' question previously in regard to the additional positions taken on during the current year we're in now to deal with COVID and the alleviation of those positions as reflected in the expenditure variance here to get down to the 400 variance. So just to clarify, five additional positions were added during the year that we're in now to deal with COVID, and that includes two janitors and three teachers, is that correct?
And two custodial staff members and three teacher assistants increased, were increased point four of an FTE to get them to be closer to full-time.
That was the extent of all additions as it relates to dealing with COVID? Do we know any more additional?
Not that we're hired, that were strictly to respond to COVID, no.
Okay.
And that, and that stayed in the FY22 budget, right? So when we started building FY22, for example, we have CNAs that we are using this school year, but they were not put in FY22's budget to begin with.
Okay. So the reduction here in 132,000 of expenses related to those staffing, that is alleviation of those positions, is that correct?
That's moving the funding from general fund over to ESF after the application is approved, which we will hopefully have soon, and it'll be approved before July 1.
Okay, is ESF funding included as revenue in this budget?
It is not included as revenue because we have not officially got the approval for ESF2 funds.
Okay.
So SO1 funds have been used already in this fiscal year.
This act, this 132 expense reduction per se, as it's presented here, is actually sort of moved off budget right now because the revenue hasn't come in yet? Is that what this represents? Because the expense will still be there, it's just funded through a different source of revenue that's not recorded in the budget yet?
So right now, in, in the budget presentation, it's in under general fund for FY22. What would happen is we would, if and when the budget is approved, it will be part of the reconciliation. So you would reduce the expense in general fund. You would increase revenue on, in restricted grants and then increase expense in restricted grants. So you're actually, the, the expense stays, but it's moved to a restricted fund.
Okay, so it's essentially freeing up more money to be used in the general fund, general budget operational.
Yeah, I've heard this exercise, what it's doing, it's reducing the, the current budget gap that we have.
Got it. I want to ask you a little bit more about this three million that sits in the unassigned balance for which is restricted. Can you explain to us what those restricted uses would be?
So I don't have, I'd have to go back and look at the audited figures, but you would have, you would have money that would end from restricted funds. So for an example, you could have school lunch funds. So school lunch could end with a balance, but by law, those funds are restricted to only be used to support school lunch. You can have a donation that comes into the district that is restricted by Rhode Island general law to its specific purpose. It still has to be accounted for in the total fund balance, but it can't be used for anything except its explicit purpose.
Do these monies have to be expended by a certain date?
If it's in an enterprise fund or a grant, not necessarily. It goes by the restrictions. If it's in general fund, best practice is to leave a certain, I know we've talked about it before, a certain percentage for emergencies and for cash flow purposes. I think for us, what we're looking at is this will be the first year that we are applying fund balance to our capital. So planning it out years, we'd have to look at how we're going to transition out of that. We don't know, we've talked before about developing a policy because we really don't know if the situation rises and you have two or three special education students that are in the district, and it's mid-year. Ideally, you'd want to bring fund balance up to support those expenses to be budgeted in a future year because your only other option at that time would be cutting a because your only other option at that time would be cutting additional expenses. So those are the kind of things that we look at for maintaining a small fund balance.
Can you provide a general idea of the makeup of the 3 million and the restrictions toward its use in addition to just the school lunches?
I mean, I can, I can go, I'd have to go back and look. Again, I'm not familiar with prior years in South Kingstown, but I can do an analysis and look to see, you know, because I've done it before, how we ended, what the purposes are and, you know, what that looks like and bring it back to the council.
Thank you.
Can you just go into what type of programs the schools are going to be providing to make up for COVID learning loss? I saw sort of a scary headline that they're expecting students to be like 26% behind, where they would have been expected to be at this point. I'm sure every school district's dealing with that.
If I, if I could, maybe I can just quickly kind of show a little bit of one slide of something that I shared last night with the school committee around summer planning. I, I feel that for our children always it's about growth and not achievement. So we always want to know that we have growth and we want to be better tomorrow than we were today. Right? So as we're looking at the summer, I'm just going to talk about it in terms of summer learning, but just to share, what's in my head is not just summer learning, but added time and support that can look like, and that can look like before school, after school, any little snippet of time that we can find for a student. And yes, we know that COVID has had an impact. We, actually, the most vulnerable students were hit the hardest. And that's probably the hardest thing for all of us to deal with, to worry about. And you've probably seen that researcher, seen that headline. We are looking at our programming for the summer. But again, if, if I'm explaining something from July 6th to August 6th in the morning, yay, we have a summer program. But when I think about these little programs, I'm not thinking about them just for those couple of weeks. There are ways that you can continue your added time and support. So, and we know when we look at research in education long before COVID, that if a child is struggling with something and you provide added time and support in a very small group setting, targeted instruction with thoughtful feedback to the child, that you can really see huge gains. So last night, we talked about having a comprehensive program in the summer that would do things like provide, I'm calling it a K to seven boost or an eight to 12 boost. But that's really taking a look at what the need is, what goals are in a literacy plan for a child or a math plan. So for example, we know we want third graders reading at grade level and every year after, it's going to, it's harder and harder to close that gap. That's, that's long before COVID. Now it's trickier. We know we want fifth grade really confident in fractions. That's kind of your reading, you know, benchmark, like third grade reading at a reading, good reading level, strong. Fifth grade confident with fractions. If we're not there, how are we getting them there? So for example, if I have Johnny and he's in fifth grade and he's not in great shape with his addition and subtraction of fractions, we're going to need to do some work to add, added time and support. And so we would work really targeted with a small group working on that over the summer. We would, we would also be able to provide a unit recovery. So we talked last night at our school committee about a unit recovery. Maybe back in the day, it was a, a summer school that, you know, I have a student who's struggling with Algebra I. But instead of repeating Algebra I, we're really going to target what units the child was struggling with in Algebra I. And those are the, maybe it's, maybe there are 20 chapters, if you will, 20 units. Instead of working on all 20, we're going to know from a very prescriptive nature what three we really want to target. And so that's, those three would be the area that we would focus on. We've had a thoughtful Title I program. We would want to incorporate that in. We've had extended school year for students who have IEPs and that meet that requirement. What we're doing this year is anybody else who has an IEP or a literacy plan or a math plan would also qualify for being able to attend in that area that they need support in. Another program that we've looked at for the summer is a senior project. So that would allow students to get a head start on their senior project. And it could be for, maybe during the school year, they feel overwhelmed by doing it and it could let them get kind of that little kickstart with their senior project. Or maybe they just have very busy senior years. And so it's easier for them to know that and walk in confident. And then the other piece is really to give confidence to those who maybe want to take an AP course, but want to have some support for a ramp up prior to. So we're really trying to run a program in the summer that would be comprehensive, but, and where we could have some overlap in terms of supports and services. So for example, you could have a nurse on staff and we wouldn't need to have seven nurses, but we could have one nurse or a couple nurses share the responsibility. Even though multiple programs are running simultaneously, we would be able to leverage the support of the support staff, no matter what program a student's in. And then lastly, I'll just share, we are looking and talking to partners that could provide afternoon camps or support for families that do work all day so that they wouldn't have to, that there, we could, you know, literally bus a child to an afternoon program. So just to kind of give a little bit of an idea of what we're thinking about, we are trying to leverage as many grants that we can. We always have been trying to do that. So, and, and I do am confident, once we get a solid program on for the summer, we should be able to do this in the future. And also maybe think about after school in the future as well. You know, it could be two days a week that we know we're providing really targeted instruction to address those gaps.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Rose?
Thank you, Abel. Lynda, another couple of questions I have in regards to the, to closing the learning gaps due to COVID. For, for students to qualify for those programs that you just talked about, what is, what's the criteria to qualify? So would it, would it be, you know, if, if a student had an IEP, they would automatically qualify? And I guess I'm wondering about students who don't have an IEP. It can take a long time to get an IEP, right? So we, we might not have identified students that will need them as a result of COVID. So are we looking at kids who have been referred to RTI? Are we looking for students that teachers are identifying as, hey, you know, this, this child was here and now I'm noticing that they're here and they could use that extra boost? So that, that would be my first question. And then my second question is about kiddos who are aging out of programs. So for example, if a child ages out of speech at age nine, right? But they haven't met their speech goals. Say you have a, an eight-year-old who's in speech, has been participating in speech via distance learning, via Zoom, which is, you know, it's, it's, it's so hard to provide that service without actually being in front of the child. So say they would typically age out at age nine, would they, would we be able to extend speech services past age nine if they hadn't met those speech goals due to having been a distance learner?
So let me, the second question, I would need to pull Charity in. Actually, she was here, but I'll just share, I have seen on some rare occasions that you do extend, although I don't want to speak, I really need to have Charity speak to it. I've also leveraged the speech language pathologist in a co-teaching environment with students before, especially in a summer program. I think I mentioned it last night at our school committee. You know, communication is a part of common core. So language and communication, while we often focus on reading and writing, but we don't, we, we keep saying, oh, in the future we will. It's really important that we focus on the language and communication. And so there's no reason that we couldn't lever, leverage that expertise of a speech language pathologist that we have on staff to be able to partner with a reading specialist or a elementary teacher to be able to help meet those goals. And there's no reason that those goals couldn't be part of a literacy plan. We would want that to be part of a literacy plan.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm speaking more to, to get even more specific to Arctic, kids, kids who have speech IEPs for Arctic and not for language.
I'd have, well, again, and I'd need to pull in Charity with respect to legally. I don't want to step in kind of the legality around an IEP. I'll say this, though, if a child needs help, if they're not successful or achieving their goals, then we need to help them. So it's for me, and yes, I do think they need a plan because we need to monitor goals. So we don't ever want to just say like, we're helping Johnny in the corner learn to read, but is it, is it fluency? Is it comprehension? What is the area, right? And have it be very targeted. But I also don't believe that we should ever have, well, you don't qualify. No, if you're not, we want you to grow. If you're not, if you're not, whatever that barrier is, we need to help the child with it. And hopefully, that's what this program does. It's, it is part of being a professional learning community. I know people think it's cliche, cliche. It's not. It's research. It is what's been going on in the stellar countries around the world for years. And it is very targeted. It's part of that PADI meta-analysis of research. If you look, what is going to help our children be successful, it's really having a targeted goal. And I think it's just saying, we don't need to meet like all these hoops to jump through to get someplace. With that, with that said, though, we, it's can't be, all right, come on into my classroom and we're going to kind of pick and choose what we work on today. No, we need to be very targeted with what we are working on today with that child. With, and it needs to be personalized. We talk about personalized education. It needs to be what the child needs. And it also goes along with engaging the child. It, you know, we, we, if they know it, we don't want them to sit and be bored. And then it also, we don't want them to be bored ever. So how can we really be creative in what we are sharing with them? So I guess I, I am not answering your question, but I do want to emphasize that I don't want lots of hurdles for folks to be able to qualify for the gap, helping us to close the gaps they have.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Kristi?
No, I was just going to speak to Jess in terms of the IEP goals. I think, I don't want to speak for Charity, but I think when it comes to IEP goals, if the goal's not being met on the IEP, whether it's due to COVID or any other reason, the IEP needs to continue until the child meets the goal.
Yeah, it's, unfortunately, that's not the case with articulation.
You're saying with speech, how they age out at a certain time?
Articulation specifically, not for language.
Well, I definitely appreciate hearing more about those summer programs. I guess my concern would be is, is, is access to those summer programs going to be equitable? Especially having heard that the impacts of COVID learning loss have fallen disproportionately on those where, where already had the largest gap. So do you think going forward, even past the summer, you have adequate programs in place, not just make up for, for that, which has exacerbated the existing gaps, but to close the, the original gaps?
I, I think that we're going to need to continue the work far after the summer. I don't, there's not going to be magic of, you know, five weeks and yay, we're back to where we were. I, I think we have a lot of work to do to consider what everybody's experienced, but now put your children there, now put the most vulnerable children there. And because I'm talking with you all about academics, you know, last night, we really had a thoughtful conversation about considering social emotional supports as well. And the needs that I believe will not, it will not look like, as I've shared before, a flick of a switch. It's more like a slow, you know, the needs of families and the impacts they've had through social, emotional and, and the impact of COVID is not going to be, okay, yay, we're all back to normal in September for us. So I do have concerns about needing to reduce staff or impacting what could end up being counselors or those support staff that are needed now more than ever. You know, that's another whole layer. And honestly, I can talk to you about fractions till I'm blue in the face, but if the relationships and the social, emotional supports aren't there, it, nothing, there's no fractions that are going to be learned. And so we really need to do the best we can to keep that support, those strong supports in place for our families. It's a priority. We're working at it. I'm not going to say I'm not. But am I concerned? Yes, I think every single superintendent, you know, in the world is concerned considering what we're doing and dealing with around COVID. And we, I feel it now. I don't know. I don't know if it's because spring breaks next week. I feel like it is harder now. You feel like, oh, it should be easier. It's harder now. It's harder for families. It's like we had an injury and it, the injury is not healing yet because we're still in the middle of it. Why, and we're sick of it on top of it. So we're tired of COVID. So it's like we've all got, we're just, why can't it be done? We see a light, but the light's not here yet. And so it's just trying to help, what I feel like on my day-to-day conversation is not just helping students, but it's trying to help the families. And, you know, I can't give you specific examples. I talk better with evidence. It wouldn't be fair for me to do that, but the need is there. I'm sure you see it on the town side in your conversation as well. But the need is greater than I've ever seen before and often unexpected. So that is something we are concerned for. We've tried to, today, leave the strongest supports we can. We're trying to be as creative as we can. But at a certain point, you know, I, I, Raquel knows, you know, not on the backs of kids, like it cannot, this cannot be on the backs of kids. And yes, I know there are ESSR funds, but we just have to be really thoughtful and careful about how we are using them. So in two years from now, while we are still trying to heal from this, that we are not in a situation that we can't even get to ground zero.
Thank you, Lynda. Emily?
So I just wanted to make sure that it is clear to everybody that's here that from Lynda and Raquel's presentation, that they have gone through the budget with really a fine-tooth comb to make sure that they pulled out every single one-time fund that could be used with the federal COVID dollars that are coming to us. In that, I don't think any stone has been left unturned in terms of how any additional dollars that are alloc, have been allocated to South Kingstown could be used. So I just wanted to ask if anybody else, if anybody had any questions about that? Because I think it is complicated and the information is changing really on a weekly, if not daily basis. And I think that's an important conversation for us to have, to make. Um, and I think that's an important conversation for us to have, to make sure we're all on the same page about that and about those funds.
Rob?
So just in that vein, Raquel, you mentioned that 50% of the S R O one dollars are committed to one purpose and another 25% are committed to another purpose. There's really only about 25% that have some discretion left around them. So I guess the question is, you you've built all of that 25% in, or are we still sort of waiting for some numbers coming out of ride that will possibly be more or less in in that 25% category or that 25% bucket?
So um, this is looking at the application questions. And the way that it's worded is that at least 50% have to be for overall acceleration activities and at least 25% for summer activities. So uh, and it says right in it, this is a floor rather than a ceiling. And it really depends on what the activities are. So we know that that is, we cannot go any lower than that. But will the summer activities or what it is cost anymore? Um, moving all the staff over, there is still, if we use the number of just 50% and just 25% and of that additional 25%, if we say, okay, you know, we've moved over staff, what are we going to do with that additional amount? We would be using that for additional P P E. Looking at that, we do not have any additional nurses for COVID in the F Y 22 budget. If C N A's are going to stay on staff, uh, that would be another thought to put in there because that's related to responding to COVID. Um, when we first did the budget presentation, we we assumed that we were getting S A. Um, so some of those dollars were already cut out of the budget. I will say that early conversations with other finance directors, I did not anticipate that ride was going to put restrictions on 75%. You know, with the budget, um, and the hope, and I know we talked about this before, is that there would be a little more flexibility with S of three funds. And with those S of three funds, I think the one thing that we may need to accelerate is repairs to H V A C because air quality, you know, is going to be an issue.
And there's H V A C work in your, in your current budget, right? So you can switch those if those monies become available for that purpose, yes, or no, I guess.
They they're in capital funded by one funded by one-time funds, but like Zach said before, if we can use the federal funds, um, then we wouldn't use as much fund balance as as we have listed right now. Or accelerate and do more one-time projects.
So just coming back to the 25% bucket. If if it it sounds like you've allocated some of that to offset the variance in in the budget now, in your general fund budget now. But you haven't used all of that 25% for that purpose because you may need some of it for C N A's. You may need some of it for others. What do those numbers look like? Just in in a rough sense, are you, half of the 25% is going to general fund offset? Is it more than half?
Uh, again, um, I don't know the cost of what the summer program is going to look like. I'm just using these numbers of strictly 25%, 50%. I think it comes out to a little over 300,000. Right now it's you know, 132 that were, that we can justify under the guidelines, the very preliminary guidelines that we have on to offset general fund. But I don't know what the plan is for next year. I don't know if we need C N A or staffing. In the summer program, yeah, I don't know what that that looks like. So these are just, I haven't even discussed with Linda what the plan is. Strictly looking at numbers. Um, so there is, if using those numbers, there is flexibility, but I don't think there's flexibility in the general fund. I think there's flexibility to add those additional expenses onto the programs that will be proposed.
So just one last question in this area. So have all of the school, summer school programs, all summer programs shifted to S R A funds? Have you taken all of your summer school programs and shifted them?
Um, summer school programs are in grants. They're in the the title grants.
But even the general fund though had, I can't remember the dollar amount right off the top of my head, but the general fund request for 2022 included summer program expenses. Uh, again, I can't remember the number off the top of my head. It wasn't huge. I think $180,000 or something like that comes to mind. But have those all, all of the general fund summer program costs, have those all shifted to S R A or not? And I I recognize you're trying to avoid, you know, a a structural deficit and you may not be able to shift some of those, but I'm just curious about how much has been shifted to S R A?
Again, I think that, you know, what the guidelines say is, are these expenses due to response to COVID? And I'm not sure that they are. I'll take a look at that number to see. I I believe the majority of those were already in federal grants. So they were in Title One, I D A B, E I S. So they were in federal grants. Not that we can't ship them out of there and put, well, but I think what we're trying to do is expand the summer program even more with the S R, S R funds.
I guess what I'm looking at though, and I again, I'm not looking at your budget documents, so I'm going from recollection right this moment, but um, what I think I'm remembering are summer stipends and summer salaries. So they they were showing up as general fund expenses.
Yeah, I, Rob, I have it here. Um, so we we have the summer pay for grants, which is the payment for, you know, the summer school. But then we also have summer pay. I believe that has to do with payment for guidance counselors that work over, you know, the 180 days.
That makes sense. And those worth thinking are not COVID related. They would have been expenses you incurred anyway, so they're not going to fit the S R A.
Yeah. I think they're actually contractual.
Right, but even, well, yeah, okay, okay. Okay.
Uh, any other questions? Councilman Mcatee?
Uh, Raquel, just a few more questions on these S R revenues. So it sounded like earlier you said that the S R two revenues have not been reported in this budget yet. Is that correct? Although you've identified at least 132 that can be moved from general expenses over to grant funded through the S R?
We are anticipating um, that we're getting 1.3 million because that was from Rhode Island Department of Education. I can't count on that right now because the application isn't even out to apply. Um, and we, we would have to wait for final approval. Do I feel comfortable that we can do that? I believe so. I'm not 100%. But looking at that, these are staff members that were hired to respond to COVID-related activities. So we're hoping with that 25% that Rob and I just talked about, that that would be something that Ride would accept and approve as part of the application. After the grant is approved, that's when we would do a budget adjustment to bring that into the the final budget.
Okay, now you're already aware of the criteria for which the money set to be spent, the 50%, the 25%, the 25%. Have you already identified the expenditures that you will use, that you will make with the 1.3 million in addition to the 130,000 here?
So the document that was released was application questions and I, out of that document, and I think it's on, I believe it is on board docs, Linda, correct? It's under from last night, it's it's under um, finance, but it, yes, it 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 outlines five absolute priorities with regards to learning equity and acceleration pathway expenses. And at least 50% of that has to be applied towards that. And those are it really has to do with personalized support. What learning loss? And so have I identified it, identified the expense that go along with it? No, because that's part of the planning process that Linda is doing right now. But I do know that at least 50% of the funds that are awarded must be spent on those activities. And also, we know that at least 25% has to be spent on those activities during the summer.
Okay. At this time, of the 1.3 million, sorry, of the existing budget through the general operation budget, budget, uh, only 130,000 you've been able to identify at this point to move from general operations to grant funded through this 1.3 million S R funds? At this time, you have not identified any more than that, but you expect maybe to be more or no?
No, these are new, the the majority of these would be new activities in response to um, learning loss. These are programs that Linda and her, they're creating right now, so they're not in the existing budget. They they never were. We, again, if you look through our budget, we cut out nursing. We anticipated if we needed nursing, that would be something to go in S A funds. We always knew that we were getting S A funds. We just didn't know the restrictions surrounding it. So going forward with the budget, that wasn't even in the budget.
Okay. And at this time, the approximate 2.3 million expected from the S R three funds is not reported as revenue in this budget. And as a result, no expenditures related to that have been reported either? Is that correct?
That is correct. We, we, they, Rhode Island Department of Education has released nothing on S of three funds, except for a document from the U S Department of Education and preliminary figures of of what we might anticipate. They haven't said you can use it on X, Y, and Z. They have, they have not released any additional information on that. But I I do know that it will have to be under that large umbrella of it has to be related to preventing, preparing and responding to COVID-19.
Okay, presuming there is great flexibility around the use of those monies. It sounds like you iterated earlier that the intended use would be toward accelerating capital expenditures. Is that correct?
Yes, that is, that is definitely a possibility and it's something that there's a lot of language, you know, at the, at the federal level about air quality in the schools. And we know as part of our capital plan and even going into, you know, out years, that is something we always intended on doing. And I think, you know, the recommendation would be for me, and I'm only speaking for me, would you accelerate those plans? And and, you know, repair all the H V A C systems so that the air quality, you know, is improved. I don't think we can live forever with multiple air purifiers in the corner of a classroom.
Uh, just getting back to potentially the restriction of having it relating to preventing and responding to COVID. How broad can that be interpreted? That seems very vague to me.
Well, um, if S A two application questions are anything like S of three would be, you have to, you have to link it towards goals. There's a lot of, of, you know, a lot of data that needs to be collected, even at the state and federal level with regards to these funding, because in the end, they are still federal funds. So using that example, I can't put my salary in there because even though I'm working on everything that's related to COVID, that's not something that would fit into those federal guidelines.
Would you say preventing or responding to COVID, what would fit in that is potentially a salary for a teacher? As it relates to responding to learning loss as related to COVID? Could this be interpreted broadly to include that?
If you're looking at, you know, the acceleration activities and summer activities, maybe. If you're, if you're talking about a second grade classroom teacher, if you were to put it into those dollars to quote unquote plug or bridge the gap with the budget, when those funds go away, how will you fund it? So that's the, you know, this goes back to the same thing that happened during when we received A R A funds. There were some districts that were forced in the same situation that we're forced in right now. You know, what do we do? Do we walk the line and use federal funds to plug a budget or to bridge a gap? You can do that if they, if they were broad like they were in in A R A, some of the recovery funds. But then, you know, they talk about the funding cliff. So what do you do when you have $3 million and next year you have nothing? What do you do then?
I understand. I'm just trying to provide an example of how broad that to me, this could be interpreted as to use the funds to allow for more flexibility than just the restriction says on its face. Thank you.
Rob?
Yeah, just as as a point of information, we are waiting for federal guidance. So they have to wait not only for a ride guidance, but the federal government hasn't yet provided guidance on this. We're expecting guidance from the federal government in early May. So what's likely, based on what what we're hearing from Washington, we had a conversation with Senator Reed last week. What we're hearing coming out of Washington is that the federal government is trying to make the use of these funds, both the education and the municipal funds as flexible as possible for the rescue plan monies, the S R F three monies in in the case of the school funds. And part of that is is because they recognize that there's already been these other streams of money that have come into the schools and have come into the state governments. And they know that this last batch of funds really comes after many, not all, but many of these sort of restricted uses have been taken care of. So we'll wait and see. We we don't have that guidance. We don't know what they're saying, but we are hearing that the desire from the federal government is to make the use of those funds as as flexible as possible. Now, that doesn't mean that we're going to have $2.3 million to spend on just anything we want in the schools or that we're going to be able to spend all the municipal money any way we want, but we we're going to have more flexibility in all likelihood than we have with earlier funds. Now, that doesn't solve the, that doesn't solve the funding cliff problem. Uh, you still have to worry about the structural deficit thing. The 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 nice thing about these funds, though, is that they're coming with a long shelf life. Uh, these funds don't have to be expended until the end of 2024. So the cliff is sort of gradual in this case. It's a little bit better than than some one-time funds.
That being said, it seems like there could be the potential that the funds could actually exacerbate the cliff if municipalities or if we chose to use the federal funds to reduce tax rates here. And
Absolutely.
You know, build up the structural deficit.
Absolutely could.
So along that line, with the budget as it is in its current form, Zach, could you tell me what it, you know, the gap is between revenues and expenditures? So basically that structural deficit that we're creating?
Can you verify that? If if we use the federal funds that came?
No, not irregardless, you know, absent all federal funds and what we choose to do with that and like a supplemental budget in terms of the revenues that we're collecting, current projected tax rate, how much are we not covering of our budget?
What is? Sure, give me a moment. I'll pull that up.
It's certainly the undesignated fund balance use of 1.3 million dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was a, you know, that figure, that was a roughly, well, that's from last year's budget was about a, that's about an $800,000 increase from what we've used. And we've typically been around that half a million. We've come down significantly over the last four or five years from what we've budgeted for undesigned fund balance. This year, we came up because of the uncertainty if there are funds that we can use or, you know, projections, revenue projections come out better than we think. Then obviously, we won't need to pull down as much of that, but using that fund balance, but some of that was related to, you know, with the funding coming back from the school last year, we had to make up some of that loss because we didn't have to use fund balance because we did use that one-time revenue from the school savings. some of that loss because we didn't have to use fund balance because we did use that one-time revenue from the school savings for last year, which was about a million.
But I, I think the answer.
But going forward, that will start, that will level out because that was one time, we'll make up for that in this one. And then, you know, going, you know, as you choose in the future with the budgets, we'll, you know, we'll try, we'll, we'll get back to a, a more level steady approach with the use of fund balance.
But I, I think the answer to President Collins' question, Zach, and, and check me here, is, you know, that this is a balanced budget. Revenues and expenses are equalized, but they're equalized using one point three million dollars worth of our savings, our undesigned fund balance.
That is correct.
Difference between revenue and expenditure is one point three million dollars.
Without the fun, yes, if you took the fun balance out, that'd be correct.
That's, yeah. Other questions of the budget? All right, well, with that being said, if there's no other comments here, we'll open it up to public comment. We will, or I will call on people who raise their hand first. If you're on your phone and listening, you need to hit star nine to raise your hand and then star six to unmute yourself. And again, you don't, it doesn't, the whole budget is what we're discussing tonight, so it doesn't have to be necessarily about the school budget. All right, you're in the meeting now, Risa. You just muted yourself, I think.
Okay, sorry about that. I actually, I didn't intend on, on speaking tonight, but I was listening a little bit about the COVID money. And I, I feel like this may seem trivial, but I've been doing a lot of work with the senior class parents, the class of twenty twenty-one. I have, my son is a senior this year. And like all kids, it's been a really difficult year. And I was wondering if I know that there are so many incredibly important things that need to happen with this money. But you talked about social emotional learning and about the effects of social, social emotional due to COVID. And obviously, that has been a tremendous effect on our, our students and in my bias particularly on the senior class. And I was wondering if any of the COVID money could be designated towards the senior class. We have raised a bunch of money in order for the kids to have a prom. It's going to look a little bit different, obviously, than proms have in the past. They didn't have a junior prom. And they are slated to have a senior prom, but I, I had a, a great exchange with Linda and Chip about purchasing signs for the senior class to show them that our town celebrates them. And I know that other towns do this. You know, they give a shout out to the senior class. And wondering if there is COVID money that could be used for, for example, last year, I think the PTG did a lot of the, the fundraising for what happened. But maybe to, to put some lettering up at, at Old Mountain Fields to, to shout out the seniors. And there's other things that I think that I'm sure that the group of parents that I'm working with could ask for in terms of just a, a little amount. Now, it doesn't have to be, you know, a million dollars, but just a little amount that, that we could use for this money. Because what they are experiencing and the loss they are experiences, it's definitely due to COVID. So I'm not sure if that's appropriate, but I just wanted to, to jump on and, and, and give that ask for those kids. So, thank you.
And, you know, I don't know if that's a, a question that we know the answer to. Linda, maybe that would be.
I, I'll just, I'll just share that we'll absolutely look into it. And I know other school departments are doing the same thing, that they recognize their seniors and what they've gone through last year and this year. And that they understand too, that they've not had opportunity to do the same fundraising that they normally have. So it's, I, I've been in conversation with Raquel about it, with Chip. And we're absolutely will update the school committee on it and work to be supportive of our seniors who've endured quite a lot.
Councilwoman Kelso?
I'd just like to ask Risa if there's a way members of the community can give. Is there an option somewhere or Fund Me something that you can let us know and let the community members who are listening to this know?
There is, can you, I'm not sure if I'm muted. So we have a GoFundMe and it's the SKHS class of twenty twenty-one. And if you want to mail checks, you can mail them courtesy of Jen Gellino. And I'll send an email to the town council and maybe I can send it in the main account so that it comes up on the agenda. But Jen Gellino at the high school, I think it's two fifteen Columbia Street. And then she gets the checks to our account. So either the GoFundMe or to send a check right to the high school here of Jen Gellino. And any and all amount is greatly appreciated, thank you.
Thank you.
Other public comment? Doral Beasley?
Just a couple of comments. At the end of last year, or in last year's budget, I believe there was something in the neighborhood of seventeen thousand dollars. There was a line item in there for about seventeen thousand something dollars for senior class graduation. And from what I heard last year in the run-up to graduation was that not a penny of that was spent toward graduation. In fact, most of the stuff that happened for last year's senior class was done privately through parents. Maybe somebody on the school committee can answer that. Maybe I'm, if I'm right or I'm not right. My other comment is this. There. And I'm not sure if, if I'm correct this, but American Rescue Act, whatever they're calling it, that those funds that, that arrive on the state's doorsteps that then will find its way to the cities and towns. Aren't, aren't there strict restrictions on, on that money? So that money can't be used to balance a budget or make up a shortfall? Or there's some kind of poison pill there that if the state decided to use any of that money to reduce taxes in any way, then, so for every dollar out of that money that used to, to do that, your COVID relief money is, they subtract the dollar out of the COVID relief money.
We are waiting for guidance. Until we get the Treasury Department's guidance, we just don't know what those funds are going to be able to be used for. Again, all of the signals we're getting from Washington is that the intention of Congress was to make them as flexible as possible, including things like tax relief and local supplementing of, of operational budgets. For all the reasons we've discussed tonight, it may not be the best thing to do. But we're hearing from people in Washington that it may be possible to do that. Not necessarily a good thing, but possible. And again, until the guidance comes out, and we're expecting the guidance on the rescue plan monies on May ninth, we're expecting the Treasury Department's guidance on May ninth.
So you're, you're not counting your chickens before the hedge? Okay. All right, thank you.
This is Linda, do you want me to answer the question for graduation and last year's budget? And I don't, I know you asked the school committee, so they may want to chime in, but of course, but we did have a COVID-style graduation. Our goal was not to have our students, our seniors, pay for anything. We, they did walk across the stage with their cap and gown, took pictures. They could be with two family members. We recorded them and then we put it all together. And we did have a graduation video. And it was, actually, we, we played it on cable and on YouTube. And we provided a DVD for each student, had that done and created and gave that to them as well. And so there were little things like that, that did have a cost to them that we did, that we normally would not have done, but we tried to do. So there would be some level of memorabilia for them, you know, the photo, that their cap and gown, their, the DVD, all of those things so that they would have that to keep, even though it wasn't, it was not near what a typical graduation event would be.
All right, so if that, if the full amount that you had available last year was not depleted, that money should exist in your that, what is it, that's three, four million dollar surplusy thing you got now?
So did it went into our fund balance, anything, any lines that were left other than the transportation that went back to the town? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And just following, I, I imagine there's a similar line item for graduation and it's current year's budget will be used for the current plans for graduation?
Yes, and the graduation event guidance was just released a couple of days ago. And we are working to have a graduation event this year that's more similar to what we're used to pre-COVID. Although we are working, we would be wanting to be outside. And of course, follow the state guidelines for that. And we're, and it most likely will be updated in May and also again in June. And we're hoping that it's updated in the better direction. So there'll be some, it's looking like right now we'll have a graduation event that is outside where a graduate would be able to bring a very restricted number of guests. But we would be able to have an event together as opposed to last year, one person at a time crossing the stage.
I see Greg Sweet's hand is up.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'd like to congratulate you guys, you did a good job. Having a zero percent increase is pretty impressive. Obviously, you looked at the past year, see how everything was going with residents and businesses. So I for one, you know, thank you for holding the line. Good job.
All right, thank you. Any other public comments at this time? All right, seeing none, we do have another opportunity coming up tomorrow. This is the first in two nights of basically the same meeting. Any sort of final comments from panelists here? Emily?
Just thank you, everyone, for all of the thoughtful conversation over the budget season. And thanks for everybody for all of your hard work.
Thank you. All right, any last comments? Very good. Well, in that case, I think we've exhausted discussion. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Just Rose, I'll move to adjourn. Sorry, Rory, go ahead, you can have it.
Second. Motion by Councilman Rose, second by Councilman McEntee. Any discussion on that? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimously. Thank you all for being here tonight. We'll see you tomorrow night.
Night. Night, everyone. Good night, thank you.